Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. We'll start with the pledge.
Pledge of business to the flag, United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible and eternal.
Thanks for coming on, everybody. We'll start with the approval of the agenda. Any additions? Dan?
I have nothing.
Dwayne?
Nothing.
Anything more, Tim?
I have one more item under G2 would be an add under old business of the WPA wall, which everyone should have received some information on that earlier.
Okay, G2. Okay. Lonnie, anything?
Nope.
Nope. Okay. Entertaining motion to approve the agenda is changed.
Still moved.
Thanks, Dwayne. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Dan. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Out of the consent agenda. Any questions on there? Entertaining motion to approve the consent agenda. Thanks, Mel. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Visitors, we don't have visitors nightmares. Committee reports, Casson Meadows Seventh Subdivision rezone in preliminary plat F1.
So including the fact that you have information regarding that been prepared by Brad and he's got his memo included in there. It's a rezone for an area that's having been brought into the city limits. They'd like to get a plat moving forward. And the planning commissions had the hearings. They were approved. There was no opposition at that meeting and they recommended approval for this at the time. You can kind of see what they're looking at there. It's going to be residential. It's just an extension of the current plats that they have or in place. I don't know if you have anything you want to highlight. So, yeah, I mean, it's reasonably straightforward, just the next phase. They are looking at doing it in smaller phases, so that will be a little bit different. And at final plating, we'll see sort of what that looks like, but.
Okay. Any questions for Brandon or planning and zoning on that, anybody? Okay. Entertaining motion to approve the rezone in preliminary plat?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Dwayne. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Do we need to do the ordinance separate for the official zoning map, amending that?
Yeah, I think that'd be fine.
Okay. Intended motion to approve the official zoning map referencing that ordinance 1.3-2021.
I'll make that motion.
Dan, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Okay, and then the resolution approving the preliminary plat for KM 7th. That's, we just, we just did that.
Just did that.
Okay, so that first one was just requesting the, okay, gotcha. All right. Thank you. On the old business ICS professional services agreement.
So you have a copy there and our city attorney has reviewed that and she provided some red line changes for me, which I'll incorporate in the version that's signed or approved. Those are primarily due to the couple of paragraphs that deal with some costs related to basically assigning where if there's an issue after the fact that they would like to be indemnified, but I don't think that's appropriate and I think the city attorney, I could get anything.
No, I think that indemnity portion, it makes sense that they would indemnify the city, but the city is just paying them money, so it makes sense that we would indemnify them.
So we'll eliminate that as part of this agreement then?
And then the fixed fees issue.
Eliminated those as well.
I just thought if the city has something catastrophic happen and then we're going to have to pay them and then we have to pay them again, then that seems a little, we're already backing out because we've got some problem and that seems a little onerous. But those were, those were mildly suggested.
I was going to ask about the fixed fee.
And one place in there was a $25,000 versus 5,000 and that.
Right.
That seemed extravagant.
I don't anticipate it being an issue. We expect to afford the project, but we will eliminate that language anyways. So with that, we'd ask for approval for this engagement with the ICS to deal with the library.
Is that premature if they don't agree to the red line?
Well, I mean, I guess.
We'll just approve the settlement.
Yeah, we'll approve the agreement if they come back to us, you know, if they want us to re-add it, I guess that's their.
We'll approve it on our end and give it back to them. If they sign it, they sign it. If they don't, they don't.
Okay.
Entertaining motion to approve the agreement removing the indemnification portion and the fixed fees portion. Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Lonnie. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you for that. We got to get going on that library, so it's good to get that moving. New business resolution declaring city council vacancy.
We got.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, G2.
So you received some information from me last week and you're all well aware of this project. We did testify on Monday with the Senate for the legacy finance and Senator Stenhouse's bill was held over for inclusion in the omnibus legacy bill. So right now I expect, I expect that to move forward. Just wanted to make sure that we're on the same page, that, you know, what the expectations of the council are moving forward on that project. We did have some revised costs and I don't have those numbers. Ronnie didn't get them to me, but I do expect the concrete or cement replacement by stone by stone is going to go up a little bit. So we're anticipating, you know, around $70,000 of total cost.
So if by chance we don't get the legacy grant, where would we take the money for the extra? I mean, where, where would we budget it from?
Well, I think there has been some conversation about utilizing liquor store dollars to fill that gap.
Okay. And when will we find out about the legacy funds?
I would anticipate early summer, so probably June. Their session ends, I think, on the 30th or something like that of May.
So we're not going to take any action on it until we find out?
Well, I mean, I guess the issue is, you know, whether the council wants to move forward with that. I think the contractor would like to schedule this project, which, which makes sense. He's getting his work schedule ready for the summer and I know Ronnie's talked to him and, you know, we'd like to know if it's something that the council is planning on going forward or not with.
But are they going to do it while the pool's open or wait till it closes in August?
He's anticipating starting right after the pool closes, probably early September.
Okay, September, okay.
I think that was what he indicated, wasn't it, Janet?
I don't remember.
I think that's what he indicated. If he could get it in earlier, if one of his projects dropped out at the point of recovery, we talked about it. Janet, do you remember? I think that's what Ronnie said. He was looking at after the pool season was done. Yeah.
Then we should know about legacy funds by then too.
Yeah, we'll know about legacy well before that.
Because there was a, the estimated cost that was raised was over 40,000, right?
About $43,000 raised by donations and pledges.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you, Janet. Appreciate that. I think we need to move forward with it and the legacy grant, that comes through great. If it doesn't, then we utilize funds at that time, whether it's liquor store funds or electric transfer somewhere, without touching the levy. I mean, for, if we can get private citizens to raise 40 some thousand dollars for a 70,000 dollar project, we can come up with 25 or 30. That's my opinion anyway. And this is a city property. It's not private property. This is city owned property. So that's my opinion.
And I agree, as long as it's not coming out of our levy, we're not raising more taxpayer, payer money, you know. If we can take it from the legacy grant, if we get it. If not, like you say, out of the liquor store fund or. With that, I would make a motion that we move forward with this project. Bar that we make sure we don't have to take money out of our levied tax money.
Okay, do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Do we, just as far as discussion goes, would we need to designate now? Were those extra funds or can we leave it open?
We don't need to designate.
We can leave it open, okay. Anybody else? Okay. Motion to approve going ahead with the project. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Aye.
Motion carries four to one with Councilmember Zelinski voting no.
All right. Well, I appreciate that direction and so we'll be in communication with Mr. Dingly and arrange for that time period. I feel very comfortable with where we're at with the legacy fund unless the state finds a huge shortage. It was a three hour meeting that we testified for about five minutes for. And the presentation before us was for NPR, which was asking for $4 million. And the presentation after us was asking for $300,000. So I, I felt like, you know, we, we should be rounding here. And I realize some, these funds are coming from state taxes, but if, I do think it's worth Casson trying to go after funds like this. And if we have other projects in the future, whether it's bonding or, you know, another project that qualifies for legacy, I fully expect to go forward with that because otherwise it's going to go to somewhere else. And it's going to be someplace where it's a rounding error or somebody like NPR, you know, they're going to use it to pay somebody for half a year.
Right. I mean, just, that's a good reminder that, I mean, every dollar we spend is taxpayer dollars.
That's right. It is.
Doesn't matter where it comes from.
I actually am tracking this.
Right. Wherever it comes from, the state, the feds, sales tax, levy, whatever, we all, we only deal with other people's money. So no matter what we spend it on. And if we can get some of our tax dollars back into Casson in some way, that's not necessarily a bad thing.
That's how I view it. I mean, otherwise we're paying for somebody else's project, so.
Okay. On the new business resolution declaring city council vacancy, so H1.
These are informational. We can make them into real documents, but they were not intended to necessarily be approved tonight. Just wanted you to see kind of how it would work and the ad. And then I wanted to have a little bit more discussion about the process and how the council would like to utilize the process. Councilmember Zelinski has indicated he's, he's expecting to resign later this year. And we just wanted to make sure that we'd have a good, healthy process so that everyone feels like they're on the same page. Previously, I don't know how it's been done in Casson, but I've seen processes where we'll solicit, and you can see in the advertisement there, we will solicit applications. And we receive those applications over a period of time, two, four weeks usually, something like that. Those applications that come in, those would be transmitted to councilmembers for your review. You would take a look at them and depending obviously how many we have, you know, if we have 10 applications, we'll whittle it down to a smaller number that would probably interview in person. The council would have questions. They would ask of this person who's applying and say, you know, why are you interested in being a council? What are your priorities? That sort of thing. And then the council, in conjunction with the mayor, would, would make an appointment at a time when they feel comfortable with the applicants they have. And if that's the process we want to follow, that's fine. Otherwise, I'm certainly open to other processes we could follow.
Yeah, I mean, we need to collect the applications, see who's interested. I've had a few people call and I just told them to wait till after the 24th that we'd be, to call city hall after the 24th and then we'd be able to tell them what.
I do have a question on the draft ad here.
Sure.
It does say to the remainder of a term, isn't it to the next general election?
Yeah, so it would be a special election would be held in November of 2022. So you'd have, I think there's three regular positions open, the mayor and two councilmembers would regularly be up.
Yep.
And then this would be a special two-year term that would be up at that time.
So it'd be a special as part of the midterm.
As part of the general ballot, you'd have the regular set, like mayor, and then the regular council and then be a separate box where it would be a special. That's correct. Yep.
So should we change that to say to the end of 2022?
Yeah.
If the term goes to December 31st, 2022.
I think the remainder of the term is misleading.
Okay, that's no problem at all. That's, I appreciate that feedback. That's kind of what I'm looking for tonight, so. Are there any other changes? I mean, is that, does that process sound reasonable? Or are there other things you'd like to add into that?
I think we need to put some time, I mean, a lot of it so that you go to the end of June. But I think if we can find somebody by, you know, May to get somebody, you know, we make a decision by then. Whether that means we swear him in earlier or later. But we got a lot of projects coming up that we're going to be making decisions on for Mannerable Avenue reconstruction, all that kind of stuff. The sooner we can get somebody in, the better. So that they aren't in the middle of the process and they have, they.
At least they have the knowledge and.
Well, they get, get up to speed on what's going on instead of coming in on the first day. And I remember when I got elected to the school board, the first, my, my first meeting, we did a budget cut, which we had no idea that was coming, so.
Yeah, and compared to the regular election, you've got a full month to sit on, on the meetings to get ramped up to what's going on, so.
So that'll be it there. But yeah, the application process is great and we'll just send, if you get any calls, just send them to city hall. We get the application.
When are we anticipating running the ad?
I would imagine that it'll go in newspapers as soon as it's approved.
Okay.
And I would expect to run it that whole time period, the whole 30 days. I mean, cover that whole, probably the whole month of April. I would anticipate probably four times.
Okay.
Take those applications at the end of the month. And I guess in May we'll just sort of council conference, see what they've got. And as I said, if we have a lot of applications, we'll probably look to window that down a little bit before we would interview. And if we only have three, maybe we would only interview three. But it'll be up to you as a council and mayor as how you feel is appropriate. It's not something that I have any, either way, it's really, you know, I'm ambivalent on the situation there, so.
I just, I feel like the longer notice we give in terms of, like if they could get in the paper sooner, the better because every, more people will know.
Window, that be next Monday? We want to have it in by for sure?
If this is approved tonight, I'll put it in tomorrow, so it'll be in next Thursday's paper.
Right. I think we'll get it in as soon as we're ready to move forward with the process.
That's as soon as, I mean, that's as soon as it can be published, so we'll get it into next Thursdays.
Can you get it in the April electric bill or is that too late?
That's too late.
We can still get it newsletter.
The newsletter, the newsletter's gone out already, hasn't it?
Has it gone out? She asked me about it today.
No, I don't.
I don't think it has, so I would say we'll get a newsletter for sure, yeah.
I haven't seen one, so.
Shouldn't be a problem. We'll make sure we check with her tomorrow.
Yeah, she's got to be really close to getting it done.
Yep.
And then we can put it on the website tomorrow too.
Sure, and do a blaster on the Facebook page.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, I should get the word out. Thank you. So do you want us to approve that listing or with the change or you can just, we can just give you the direction to do it?
I just wanted to get your feedback before we posted it, so that's perfectly fine.
Okay. 2020 budget review.
All right, Nancy.
Whoa, boy.
Okay, yeah, it just went, there we go. I'm passing out the presentation, but I'm also putting it on the screen. So this is the annual review for the operations from 2020. This is different than what will be covered with the audit review, which will come. Right now we're planning on the first meeting in April. And we avoid duplication in information. As you recall, the auditors in the past have had a lot of graphs comparing year to year to year. And I have some of that as well too, but I covered primarily from a budget perspective, which is also an operating perspective, department by department, whether it's general fund or enterprise fund. And I try and summarize it in a way that is useful information. I do want to say if you have questions about any of this tonight, all questions are good, whether tonight or if you have questions later, just let me know. Also a reminder too, if you ever have questions during the year, let me know. Now, earlier in January or February, you should have received the financial draft. It's, it's not final. We also still have a few journal entries, which are mostly related to Gatsby entries. But it was primarily done, so you should have had a feel for how the departments did at that point in time. So tonight will be mostly summary in nature. We won't go over the contents. We'll be going through that. The first main page is the general fund. So the different departments in the general fund. And you can see we compare it primarily from budget to 2020 final operating results. There are a few differences here and there. For example, council, we are over budget. Well, why was that? Well, we had $8,000 in specific fees.
Nancy, you want to make this, make it actually put in slideshow version?
Where's that? I can't read it.
Here, let me, let me see if I can help you with that.
It's up there somewhere, isn't it?
You just had it right there.
This one?
I think that one, yep. And go to the far left one. No, go back up to your ribbon.
Am I at the ribbon? Oh, yeah, because I can't see that from here.
No, I got you. It's pretty small.
Well, and that's why you do have the printout, but we have some other slides that won't be so detailed, but.
Scroll to the top of your page.
Okay, he'll do it in the other room.
You can do it on the monitor.
But so, so if you see in front of you, the, the first line is council. You know, we had some extraordinary extra fees and council approved some new carpeting at city hall. So we put that there. Photo down below, and I'm, I'm not necessarily asking you to follow right now, but in planning and zoning, we, we didn't quite use all of the Hysington Kegler monies that we had budgeted for. You know, if we didn't need to use them, we didn't. The most significant differences with any of these related to public works. When COVID struck, we asked all our departments to not spend if they didn't have to. And there were big differences in streets, in sidewalks, and a few other areas along with water and sewer and electric, which really helped save a lot of monies. And that's why a lot of those are down. You can see under health, we are way over budget, but that was because that's where we captured all of the COVID expenditures that we had across the city. Now, some of that was recouped with the CARES Fund Act dollars that we received. So this is just what we're looking at is the expense side. So in our areas, that's a lot to look at. You can take it with you and look at that detail. But I'm going to move on to the next side in the interest of time. So if you have questions, now I'll take those for this stage. Also a reminder too, we used to have this session as a pre-council session and I usually got about a half hour, an hour, so I'm going to try and expedite it since we're in the valuable council time, so. But again, don't be afraid to ask for questions later. The, the next page is.
I'm supposed to click down.
Yep, okay, thanks. The next page is almost the same information, but what we've done here. So on the left is the final results, the actual. But then we offset it with our revenues and fees that might be collected in that area. So for example, under police, it's 190,000. Well, we get about 90,000 from the state as fire, as, we also get fire aid, as police aid, but then there are fines that are collected, education grants, things like that. So we take the expenditure and offset it by any fees that we might collect or other revenues. And so the right-hand column for every department gives you a general idea of the tax support needed. And by tax support, I actually mean what we actually levy for taxes, but also local government aid. We don't, we've never allocated local government aid to any particular department. So we kind of lump together what support that we need from the tax levy or local government aid to support our operations. And I apologize, some of them don't have the negative in front of it like it should, but you can tell what the difference is. And just a reminder that when we budget, we usually budget for a break even. So this is truly what it costs, you know, what it costs to run the departments in 2020. Anything, questions there? Anything jumping out at you? Kate, do you want to go to the next one? I just thought I'd summarize since this question kind of came up. Do I still, oh, there, okay. Just to kind of let you know how the Aquatic Center did in the arena, because those are in a way some of the areas most impacted by COVID because of not being able to have the public attend. So I wanted to point out on, you know, on the left, on the right-hand side for the Aquatic Center, we did budget for a loss of almost $100,000. That's what it costs out of the tax levy after, while we collecting fees and concessions and things like that to operate the pool. And so it, it ended up being about a loss of 109,000, so about 9,000 more. The makeup of it was different. You can see our revenues were way down because we only had daily fees. We had restricted the amount of people that could attend at any one time. But we also had then a commensurate amount of expenditures decreased. Was that all payroll? No. About 20,000 was saved in payroll. We saved some in supplies that weren't needed and we had some savings in utilities. And that was the bulk of the expenditure difference. But again, overall, when you budget for the negative 100,000, we had a loss of 109. So the difference was about 9,000. And then we had the ice arena for the city, where again, we lost a lot of activity out there. So we budgeted on the city side. So the operations out at the arena, we split any profit or loss with the county, but we budgeted a loss of negative 29,000 and it came out to about 37,000 for us. And that's not counting any additional monies. You know, the county paid their 12,500 for the refrigerant replacement. And ours will kick in for 2021. And for 2021, we budgeted a loss of negative 24,000 for the arena, for our portion, our share. And that includes the 12.5, so it's actually much more favorable with what we've budgeted. Oh, and just a reminder too, for 2021, we budgeted almost exactly the same for the pool of a loss of about $100,000. So then, next page, we try and summarize the utility funds. When I put together this summary, I do not include any payments of principal or any depreciation. And you'll, you'll see always those in the final numbers. The revenues look relatively large compared to the expenditures, but that does not include that principal payment, that we, those principal payments that we need to make. But we always budget incorporating that into the dollars that need to go out. So in, in a way, we look at budgeting for our enterprise funds on a cash flow basis, because we always want to make sure we're collecting enough to be able to pay our debt service. A couple of comments on the water side as well as on the electric side. You know, we, we have portions of the year where we're not necessarily fully staffed. So we've, we have savings on occasion in payroll, but we always budget as if we are fully staffed. For sewer and storm, we budgeted full up for the INI all in one year. Well, that, that didn't happen, especially with COVID and it was much less than we thought. But that still positions us well for the coming year. Doing, we did not schedule any kind of real increase in utilities to cover that. We were using the, the fund balances that those two funds have, but we budgeted the line item just because we knew we'd have expenditures in that area. Also, on the electric side, our utility costs were much less than we had planned, almost $500,000 less. So, so those are some of the differences between budget versus actual. And just a side comment that, you know, we brought on Mantleville a couple of years ago. And quarterly we bill them and then we settle up at the end of the year based on the actual results at the, for the plant only. So not, not collection, but for the plant only. And they contribute about 105,000, 115,000 a year, depending on what our expenditures actually are by the end of the year. They, they pay also though for their principal and interest, their portion of the principal and interest on that new financing that we had. So any questions with any of those? Okay. Here too, again, we're, collect a lot of history. You can just look primarily at the bottom two lines, how we did with 2020. We're always looking at an average as, you know, the, the cost of that purchase power. You can see with our history, we had a couple of bad years. We had a couple of contracts that just kind of exploded on us. During those years, we also had some significant losses. So it's good that we're back on track in not only building the reserves, but you can see that those percentages for the last couple of years of, of cost compared to revenue have been right in line with each other. We hope to maintain that with any contracts that we have coming up, you know, given the changes potentially in natural gas costs, we hope that'll stay the same with the contracts that we have in place, so.
Another point, just to highlight is the, you can sort of see the last three years, it's sort of flatlined in the electric numbers. And a lot of it, even though we're seeing growth in the community of residential growth, we're also seeing efficiencies with more efficient lights and things like that. So I know that Nancy and I both have taken a look at it. We have that rate study that, that you guys approved to be done this fall. It's going to be based on a little bit flatter, you know, the, we're not seeing the escalation of, of, you know, consumption that we maybe had anticipated in the previous rate studies. So I expect that that's going to be a little bit flatter rise there because of those trade-offs.
Yeah, and sometimes too, you know, what we. Yeah, and sometimes too, you know, what we use is depending on weather, both for water and electricity. So, you know, it can fluctuate as you can see there too. Okay, and the next slide is liquor inventory. We had a relatively good year. The auditors have already asked, why was it up so high? Well, when COVID struck...
COVID.
Yeah, liquor sales increased a lot for those first couple of months. What's amazing though is, so this sheet is, you know, goes many columns to the right with the sheet that I work with. And that, that percentage, you know, the cost of product has been about that 74%, 74.7% consistently for about 12 years. So it's, it's right on, and that's really good considering we only count the inventory once a year. We only do it at year end, but it's pretty consistent across the board. So Kathy is always watching her pricing. Okay, the next, the next page, we won't go into detail at all. It's just giving you an idea of what we expanded this year. About six of those items are for leased vehicles by department. The streets mower we replaced, but we used funds that we received in 2019 from a mower that kind of just blew up on us. So we received insurance proceeds. We received half of the park fencing from, I believe it was the KM Recreation Fund. You know, we pay into that, but they kind of paid us back because that was our purchase. And you see the other items, but note on the bottom, there were a few items that we purchased out of the CARES Act that needed to be capitalized. So these are essentially longer-term assets. We had a whole package of telecommuning for the police department. We had remodel of this room. We had the additional items needed for this room, like the, the media system. And then I didn't list it out in cost, but you know, we paid a lot for other supplies that aren't capitalized, all of our COVID supplies across the departments, and also the police payroll. And at the end, I'll just pass that out. Note that we are still tracking COVID expenditures. We're not sure if we'll get any funding or how that'll shake out, but we've asked, you know, if they're taking measures over and above what they might normally have to keep things clean or special supplies, we've asked all the department heads to continue to track it as a COVID expense. So we're not out of that yet. Okay? Cash and investments, just giving you an idea of the difference of where we were at last year compared to this. On the general fund side, we're ahead for several reasons. We did receive about $150,000 from the flood, the state support that we received. So even though most of the flood expenditures were incurred in 2019, we didn't receive the payment until well into 2020. We also applied some of our COVID funds, about $200,000, to our police payroll. So while it was budgeted because it kind of applied, that was $200,000 extra received just for that. So it was a combination of several things, as well as, like I indicated, department heads cutting back in response to, you know, if we didn't need to spend it, don't spend it, because we really weren't sure where the pandemic was going to take us. And then the other funds is mostly related to any profits they might have had, again, for either reduction in expenditures. Like I say, the electric fund, we didn't spend nearly as much as we needed to with our purchase power expenditures and things like that. The next page, again, several years' worth of history, but if you look at the bottom line, it gives you an idea about our debt per capita based on our current population at the time. Obviously, 2005 was the lowest. Well, not obviously, I shouldn't say that, different dollars, but also different population. Highest being 2017, when we were actually carrying over one year's worth of debt for refinancing, but we had to show it on our books and carry it over. But you can see that we've reduced it. We pay off about $2 million a year. And, but these figures will likely change for next year, the year after, when we look at debt for several of our projects. But it's, this gives you an idea of where the levels have been at over the years. Okay? And this is a different way of looking at debt. It gives you an idea of where that debt was generated. Was it from the enterprise funds, which is mostly our street projects, or the street, which is also mostly our street projects, except we know we have a few other things like the ladder truck and the TIF bond and the assessment bond. While we may not be responsible for paying that, you know, it's kind of a pass-through, it's still debt that, that we owe, and it's classified as general fund. So about 50%, almost 50% is the water fund, and then, I mean, excuse me, the general fund. And then another big amount is wastewater with the debt related to all of our plant expansions over the year. And as has been noted, our 2001 debt for the new plant, the last principal payment is due in August of about $500,000, then we'll be done with that. So we're going to have other street projects that are going to come up, maybe a future expansion of the plant as needed, which might replace some of that. But in the meantime, we're going to accumulate whatever funds we have. We can use those to whatever extent we choose to pay cash for any of the projects that we might have in the future. But it's also now though paying off or paying for those INI projects that we have. Okay? Just a couple other comments. You know, we're always asked, what can we refinance and take advantage of these lower interest rates? Well, we did that some already this year, and we don't have much to do. 2021 maturities, 2023, 2024, they're too close that you wouldn't want to spend dollars to refinance them. It's just too short a term. 2028, we just refinanced that, so that's probably not going to be eligible either. It's not eligible for a while, but even if you did, it would be too close to maturity. So then those that I listed from maturities, 2030 to 2042, we have a couple of sewer revenue bonds. Those are already relatively cheap, but they, the understanding with the PFA is they don't want you refinancing. You know, they turn around and sell their portions to whoever, and they expect those interest rates. So we, we don't have that. The op-ed and assessment is technically callable, but it's really a small amount. And again, you don't want to, it's about the same money to refinance a bond, whether it's $5 million or if it's $200,000, and it's, it's sometimes not worth the dollars to do that. What's that?
That 280 is what's still owed on that?
Yeah.
So it's what, about $70,000 a year or something like that, or?
Yeah. Well, yeah. The street project, you know, could be a possibility depending on interest rates, but that's not for another three years. And the TIF bond, we just did, the 2028, so we did just do that. So that just gives you perspective on that too. And then I included this because the markets have changed dramatically, and especially with COVID, these are for, these are interest rates for our certificate of deposit investments. And when I started, you know, here 13 years ago, they were all running at 4%, 6%. And then we had the recession, and it dropped. And now this is, I mean, it's amazing. You can see the average interest rates, and that's because we're holding on to some that they can't call. You know, we've had some that they've called so they can replace it with lower interest rate debt. So we're losing a lot in interest, but that's what the market is, and we're trying to invest it in whatever we can. But even just recently, we're lucky to get a five-year for 0.3%. It's, it's been amazing, but I just thought I'd point that out because that's kind of what we're faced with now too. And then the 2021 budgeted, just kind of listed a summary there. And then on the horizon, you're well aware of the projects that we have coming up. 2022 is going to be a really busy year. We're already thinking ahead of, you know, what projects, depending on timing, you know, we combine for financing, what sources we might have in-house to take care of that. But we also know that we have other things that we have to finance as well, such as the, any library fixes. And, you know, we've got some other areas where we already know where the sources of funding are coming from. So we have that. And then the last thing is, I already passed it out, you've already seen this, I believe, but it's the summary of the CARES Act funding. We received $590,000, and of that, you can see where we applied some of the funding. The detail of all the graphs, everything that we thought was eligible. So we considered 50% of our police payroll eligible, but of that $490,000, we really only used $200,000 of it to apply toward the police funding, so, or the police payroll. So I kind of kept going right through that. Does anyone have any questions right now? Otherwise, again, please email me, call me. I'll be happy to answer your question anytime with respect to 2020 and years before that and for 2021. And just a reminder, for April 14th, I will be presenting the auditor's report on behalf of the auditors. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, we added the number four COVID-19 vaccination guidelines.
Oh, sure, yeah. You've got, should have information in Dropbox, and you should have received as well. Something that's kind of making the rounds right now amongst a lot of cities in Minnesota is employees, as an encouragement to them, providing them with time to go and get vaccinated outside of the, you know, sick leave, that sort of thing. Partly, we ran into a little issue with an employee who is a new employee who didn't have any available sick time, basically. So, you know, the, the question is, you know, is this something we should be looking at as an incentive to encourage people to, to get vaccinated, is allowing them to take that time for the vaccination as, as part of their, as part of a paid time? So, you know, you've got to include in there, you know, you can read through that memo or that draft, basically, and, you know, in essence, that's, you know, how we would, would work it. I just wanted to bring this to you. Like I said, a number of cities are doing this throughout the state, and it's something that might be seen as a positive to encourage people to go and get that. I'm open to any kind of comments anybody has.
Well, I, I believe if you want to go get the shot, that you should just do it on your own time. You've got plenty of time. You've done work most days at 3:00. Most of these places, you can go in anytime, or if you want to do it during your own time at work, do it on your own time.
That's not entirely true, because I know I had to schedule to go in and get both doses of mine as a school district employee, and you are presented with a very regimented amount of time, and you have to make an appointment. So for instance, tomorrow is my second dose. I could not get a time during the day, so I'm having to go when I should be at play practice. So it's not just a free-for-all, go whenever you feel like it. It's, it's pretty regimented and signed up, and a lot of times, you do have to take what you're given.
Not walk in.
Not walk in yet.
Right. But a lot of the businesses and employees, especially at city, have how many hours of bank sick time that they could be using instead of using our taxpayer money? We, how many hours of sick time do most of our employees have? You know, on average, they'll have some. Why are we giving out more and more? Not every business does that. If I want to get one, it's on my own time.
The only plus side, if, it's encouraging employees to do it. And by doing that, we're protecting the citizens. I, I have no issue with paying them. I really don't. It, it's only protecting everybody. Yes, I know that they could arrange to do it on their off time or use their vacation time, but if it helps just one person, it's worth it.
So if we do it for this, do we, how do we have to do it for flu shots and every other vaccination that's out there?
No, I don't believe so, because those are so much more commonplace.
But, yeah.
You know, in the long run, I, I was bringing this to you as informational. You know, if the council feels like it's appropriate, that's fine. If not, then, you know, it's, it's just a matter of, we do think it would be an encouragement to people. And I do think there are a couple of cases where we have new employees who do not have the time, where I still want them to at least be incentivized. Not everyone's going to get this. I don't think that the actual cost to the city will be overly substantial, because I don't know the percentage of employees that will choose to get the vaccine. It, it may not be as high as we'd like it to be potentially, but, you know, I certainly understand your, and for most employees, it wouldn't be an issue. But it is something where I know we do have some that, that don't have that much bank time. And, you know, it's, it's an incentive. It's a positive, just like we've dealt with other employee labor issues before. It's, it's a carrot we're kind of trying to give people. So I, I certainly understand where you're coming from, Dan. That makes a lot of sense.
I have a greater issue if they don't get the vaccination and they get sick that we're paying sick time.
Yes.
And, you know, to that point, if they choose not to get the vaccination, then, you know, we should not be paying the sick time.
Well, but if they had the sick time banked, if they leave, they're taking the sick time, we're paying it either way. So if we keep banking sick time, we're only banking money that is costing us money later. So we either have to start capping all our sick time so we ain't paying it out, or starting, giving them incentive to use it, is what I'm looking at. Because right now, you got it, we have to pay for it. And if they keep banking it so they can retire early or, we're still...
That's a negotiated thing, though. It's not, we just can't do it.
No, but I, but...
And it, I understand what you're saying about more time, but from my opinion, in this situation, it's a pretty special circumstance. It's not the flu shot, which you could walk into Hy-Vee and get the flu shot in 10 seconds. This is a pretty specialized thing, and I know a lot of private businesses that are giving people whole days off to go get their vaccination. The idea being that if they choose to be vaccinated, because you can't make somebody get vaccinated, but if they choose to get vaccinated, that only helps protect your own business, that you don't have to shut your whole business down for two weeks, because if they don't get vaccinated and they wanted to, and it's not just call up and get it. I mean, they turn people away that just show up. If you're not on a list, you, you don't get the shot. So I understand what you're saying, Dan. I don't like, you know, banking more stuff, but for this, we're talking an hour? Potentially, right. It should be on a difficult basis. You know, it does limit the amount that we would be on the hook for. I mean, worst-case scenario, it's one day, one shift, if somebody has an adverse reaction that they would be, you know, eligible to have. And then after that, you know, it's clearly stated, it, it's their own sick time. So I think, you know, it, the intention was, I absolutely understand where you're coming from on both sides, but the intention was to try and create a situation that encourages our employees to take it. I don't want there to be one employee who says, I couldn't take it because I didn't have time. It'll, we've already had several employees here at City Hall that have missed a substantial amount of time, and it definitely impacted our service levels. I mean, it's just the honest truth of it. It puts more stress on the other employees, and City Hall is not the most critical. Sewer, water, those departments are definitely the most critical. I just, I mean, we talked about trying to treat our employees fairly and wanting to encourage them, but this was one way that we, we potentially do it.
I agree. Anybody else? Mel, anything? Dan, anything else?
Nope.
Nope, I'm good.
I would make a motion to set this in place, to approve this as our policy.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Any further discussion? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries forward along with Councilmember Egler.
No.
Administrators report.
A lot of good stuff. As I said, I've, I sit through a three-hour online Zoom meeting for the legislature for five minutes of testifying, so it, sometimes my days are not as interesting as I wish they were. You've got those items in there, some concerns about local preemption with zoning. That's something that we're watching. I, I'm not sure what it'll get through with the divided legislature. Including your package, you have another items on our personnel that we'll talk about tonight, and the ICS library project. We do have some potential funding. I tried to explain this and send out information to the council earlier. You should have gotten a spreadsheet. It was a searchable spreadsheet. So this American Rescue Plan, which was inside of this, they've got a lot of names. American Rescue Plan inside of the Corona Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, that the federal government has approved, and it's going to be... federal government has approved and it's going to be sending out funds to a lot of cities, almost every city in, in the state of Minnesota is, is currently on, and it will be, uh, basically a community block grant formula. So the city is entitled to a certain amount of money, which could be used for some revenue replacement, but it's going forward from basically this year. So it's not like, you know, Nancy talked about, we lost $200,000 at the, uh, at the Aquatic Center. So, and we know that the budgeted revenue loss would be, you know, 90,000 or whatever because we only had 250 compared to 360 or whatever. I can't, we can't go back and backfill that and say that was revenue loss. Now, if we have revenue losses going forward, I think there's some ways that different cities are talking about doing that. And, um, one thing it can be utilized for is potentially water and sewer projects. So replacement projects, not, you can't build a new street and pay for a, a new street with that kind of money, but it could be, so that's an excellent use for us where we know we have some projects that if we can save it there, those monies can either be not levied because we won't have the debt service to the same extent, or it could be utilized for other things. So, um, you know, as the more information comes out, there're going to be two transfers. They're both going to be coming later this year. So, um, you know, you can see that. I've got a couple of other things in there. Um, an update on that personnel issue, that's of course under personnel where we'll deal with Mr. Anderson. And then we did meet with the, uh, health insurance folks where we're going to be getting an RFP, uh, related to, uh, comparison of healthcare costs. It seems like, uh, they go up every year and we're not necessarily expecting to see a large savings, partly, and I share this with the personnel committee members, is because our utilization, our utilization is something like 200%. So if anything, right now, we're making money off of the insurance because we just, we have a workforce that, uh, has had a number of issues that, you know, medical issues they've gotten treatment for and, you know, we're glad to have them all, they're good employees, but that's a, it's a real cost. So we're certainly looking at ways to try and cut that down. Um, the only other two things I have then, you know, one's on your agenda and one was just received, I just received this morning. Um, common acres annexation request, you've got the petition in there. That's for a property that's about 51 acres on the east side of town. They will have a hearing scheduled for, I think, the 14th, right Linda? And then I actually received one related to the Zed property, which is on sort of a, just straight north on 57. Those two parcels that we brought in, it's about 6.12 acres. So that one's not included in your packet, but I did want you to know that we do have those two hearings coming up, um, some annexation coming up. We have forwarded the joint resolutions to the township, so we'll have those joint resolutions in your packet for the next, uh, council meeting. And with that, I take any questions?
Thank you. Appreciate it. So the annexation request, do we need to take action on that tonight?
No actions required. I just wanted you to be aware that we have parcels, uh, on northeast, down the straight north.
Okay. Perfect, thank you. Uh, personnel, hiring of Aquatic Center employees.
And I can just highlight the parking rec board met. Um, you've got the list of the employees and the wages, um, their positions. There was some discussion about wage levels and things like that, but I think we have that all rectified. I don't know, Dan, if you have anything else you want to add?
No, no, you can see everything that's in there. And if you got questions like on there, you know, if you look, it'll say first year. That's just because when we hire new employees, we can start them under a probationary, so we can lower our pay. Then once they come back the next year, then they go to the regular. It's just a cost savings for the city.
But we would be looking for approval of that, uh, hiring list then, if, uh, there's no objections.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I'd make that motion.
Thank you, Dan, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mel, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, we remove to added, uh, let's see here, motion to accept the resignation of Chris Anderson. And there is a, at the end of the administrative report, there is a letter there.
Yeah, so I did, I did email out that, uh, email that you should have gotten embedded in email today and, um, Mr. Anderson just indicated that he's, uh, going to be resigning. So, yeah, we're basically just looking for a motion to accept his resignation. I have spoken with the personnel committee. I think, uh, we'll be revising that job description, um, based on what Charlie and Ronnie are telling me. There's some different skillsets we want to include and then we'd, we'd hope to, to post that job in the near future, uh, but that's based off of what the, what the council feels is appropriate, so.
Okay. I'll make the motion to accept Chris Anderson's resignation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'd like to thank Christopher's service to the city and wish him the best in the future. As far as posting the position, um, at the personnel committee, we had a conversation with Charlie, um, and there are some different things we can do at that position to get better coverage instead of just being parks or just being streets of more of a public works employee. So if they want to, you want to work on that, bring it back the next week so we can get that posted.
Absolutely.
But we do need to get that filled because there's some work that we need to get done, so.
I was just going to mention also, um, you know, the, Josh is here tonight. He had originally requested approval for an employee ad. Um, he indicated very recently, and maybe Josh, you can just talk about a little bit, you know, that the, the situation with officer hiring is difficult right now. There's a lot of competition for services. I know Josh, you had, you had mentioned that Mr. Raymond had actually taken another position. So if you just talk about that a little bit.
He got offered a position with Dodge, kind of decided to take that as better for his family, but right now there's 36 agencies hiring across Minnesota. Uh, the majority are hiring for full-time officers, uh, part-time officers. It's hard to get them because they have to have a full-time license now. Uh, the state eliminated the part-time license a couple of years ago. So everybody's going into law enforcement, it's doing it, uh, to become a full-time officer. So, uh, in the near future, it's going to be very difficult. Actually, it's difficult right now to get the part-time officers because even if we do hire them, uh, they're not going to stick around as we've seen over the last couple of years.
Well, I, I think right now we'll still have a vacancy in that department and I don't know what your plan is, Josh?
Yeah, we're going to, my plan is to post it again. We'll open it up for everybody to apply. So, but last time we posted it, we posted as part-time officers. We have a poster right now for part-time officers, but we'll add full-time into that and hopefully we'll get more applicants.
And just to remind the council, this isn't an ad, it's a backfill position from what we.
Yeah, we're still working short one full-time officer. We're using part-time officers. Um, two of our part-time officers are also temporarily working full-time for the county. So they're very limited hours. One hasn't worked in the last couple of months, so.
Okay. Well, see how that goes with the posting, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Attorneys report. City code changes regarding landlord tenant assessments.
Kevin, do you want me to kick it off or? Well, yeah, if you want to kick it off and then, um, this afternoon I emailed out that utility policy changes document. And I, I apologize, I like to get these things to you as early as I can. Sometimes things happen between when the packets published and when we have things come up, but I want to bring them to you as timely as I can and go ahead if you want to talk about that a little bit.
Um, well, in taking a look at the specific provision of our code, I don't think that we necessarily need to change it based upon the, the circumstances that brought it to our attention. Uh, I think the state statute limits how we can apply liens, um, based upon our ordinance. So I, I don't think necessarily that we need to change it. Um, like I said, in, in this circumstance, it's going to limit how we can apply those liens, but, um, you know, but for to maybe add something, the only thing I was thinking is, uh, as far as a modification to the ordinance itself, is we could just reference, you know, subject to Minnesota statute 325, E O 25. Somehow just reference that when you're talking about a, a property that's being managed or, you know, have a landlord tenant kind of situation.
Basically just to backstop this issue, so what we run into is that, uh, you know, typically in the past, and I think you did it today, actually, the, the council certifies doing with claims to the auditor on the property taxes. And there is some, as the city attorney indicated, some language which basically says that it may, it may not be possible to certify all those charges, to assess all those charges to their taxes.
So it's, and the one was specifically an electric service charge and specifically because it was a landlord tenant situation.
When a landlord hasn't been included in the documents, the state statute says that we're limited in what we can assess back. And the issue there is that we have a substantial amount of write-off that would be necessary if we don't have a way of recapturing those dollars. So that's why I, you know, I included the documents that I did. Basically what the utilities department, and I, I'm talking with Jared and what we're looking at doing is requiring that the landlord be involved as part of that establishment of the account. Because then the landlord is acknowledging that that account is, you know, it's their building, it will be their charge if their tenant doesn't pay it. Um, and I, I recognize that there's landlords, you know, that may not, may not want to do that, but, you know, otherwise we have, we're very restricted in our means of collection in terms of, the landlords do have the ability to put that as part of their, their lease, you know, as part of the collection they would make on a monthly basis of, of rent, you know, and, and, um, other cities do do that. That's, uh, what a lot of our other, our utility partners encompass do, to collect those fees as they, they include that landlord so that it, it's not able to be challenged with state statute. And it's, it's strange to me, but the reason is because you're not absolutely required to have electric service to have a habitable building. You have to have water, you have to have sewer for a habitable building. You don't have to have electric. And so the state allows you to assess those habitation charges, but they don't allow you to necessarily assess all the electricity or whatnot because there are people who apparently don't have electricity and they use other means. I suppose cabins have wood fires or whatnot for heat, that sort of thing. So that's basically why we're looking at making this change. And I wanted you to make aware of it because it is a substantial cost and certainly is something that a lot of staff hours go into is trying to collect these arrears payments. Um, it's just the reality of the situation. Are there any questions anybody has on that? Go ahead.
Yep. So just from a practical standpoint, I totally understand that and as a landlord, I would want to know if my tenant wasn't paying their bill because if they skip out on town, I know that I'm responsible for it and I want to know that it's being paid so that way they don't skip out on town on a $2,000 bill.
Sure.
And I can take care of it right away. However, is there a way with the billing system or the policy, however it is, that, you know, I wouldn't even mind, you know, we have our business, you know, CM Square Properties owns the building. We have a property owner, we're ultimately responsible for the utilities to be paid on that building. But each person has their own unit. Is it possible to have our property, whoever the property owner's name is, knows that they're the ultimate responsible, but then a, a memo line for tenant, whatever, X, Y, Z, I'll just want to practically, it's probably never, I hope it never happens again, but we had a tenant who got a PPP loan and went to apply for forgiveness. And one of the things you could use part of that flow is your utilities or operating expenses. They turned in their utility bill, but it had my name on it. So the bank denied them to use that as an eligible PPP expense because it's, why are you paying somebody else's utility bill? The utility bill has to have your name on it. So for some things for, again, that's just a drastic situation now, but if they're going to have the, the landlord, you know, the landlord's, the owner's name on it and the tenant's name, because then it's technically their.
I don't think, you know, talking with Cassie and utility billing, I mean, I think we'll, we have some options that, that should work. I mean, one other thing that we've got going, you know, in your case is, uh, we do have a third-party notification agreement as well now that, you know, landlords can, can get when they have a tenant going in. The tenant has to acknowledge that, but that would, that would mean that the landlords would be getting a copy of the bills. Um, but so, yeah, I don't, I don't foresee that being an issue. Um, we have to do something because obviously we, we're losing out on revenue and our only real option then is to turn it over to collections, which, you know, Nancy and I talked about, it's not very effective typically for us with, with that opportunity. We have gotten some money with Revenue Recapture, which is a, a program we use through the state, um, but that only really works when people are, are living in the state and they're working in the state. And a lot of times.
Getting a tax.
And getting a tax return or some kind of revenue. Otherwise it's very hard to, um, and we just, at a small city, we don't have the ability to write that off. But absolutely, I'll talk with Cassie and fine tune that. But I think it makes sense a lot.
But like this new Talos thing we're looking at, there's got to be a way if we go onto that system with their dashboard that as the building owner or the homeowner, you can log in and see if there's any bills that aren't being paid. You know, because in the lease it says you have to maintain your utilities and pay them on time. Um, but right now it's not practical to come follow up on that. So we just assume everybody's paying them or else we'd hear about it, so.
Yeah, no, I think Talos has a lot of capabilities that will give us a better user interface, which should allow us to track energy use and consumption of water and other things like that. So, no, I mean, uh, we're certainly, we want to work with our landlords because we have some very good landlords. We have some ones that aren't maybe quite as good, but we have some very good ones